Thank you so much, Janelle, and again apologies on behalf of the department for the 2021 minute delay in starting this afternoon's public hearing due to technical difficulties. Good afternoon and welcome to today's public hearing. I am Director San Augustine and along with my DPHSS staff, we are here to receive comments on the proposed COVID-19 Public Health Information, Public Health Enforcement Rules. It is 2:21 PM, October 31st, 2020, Saturday, and we are now officially opening the public hearing for comments. Also know the comments can also be submitted to publichealth@dphss.gwam.gov up through November 4th, 2020, 4:00 PM. Working collaboratively with Guam Police Department, it became apparent that there was absent the mechanism to provide consequences for non-complaints with public health guidance and directives during this public health emergency. Our first and foremost focus is for community and personal responsibility, for us to take ownership of what we can individually and collectively do to prevent the further spread of the virus. While this is our focus, there remains the need to close the gap in the enforcement area during this public health emergency. Therefore, the development of rules as they are draft form are before us for public comment, and through the public hearings and submissions of comments through the email provided earlier, the comments received will be reviewed with the intent to improve and or refine the proposed rules. Ms. Janelle Carrera, our Public Information Officer, will be facilitating the line of speakers for today's public hearing. And should we have more speakers on the time allotted, Ms. Carrera will coordinate with you to list your names for next week's Wednesday's hearing, to allow for those who are not able to provide comment today to be the first ones to present comments next week. And I would also like to take the time to introduce the DPHSS staff who are present for this hearing this afternoon. Would like to start with our deputy directors to introduce themselves, and the staff from the Division of Environmental Health, who will remain throughout the hearing to receive public comment. You got to turn off your mute.
Hafedain, good afternoon. I'm Terry Uggan, Deputy Director of the Department of Public Health and Social Services.
Hi, I'm Lauren Joinus, Deputy Director of Public Health and Social Services.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our public hearing. My name is Rosanna Robaco. I'm the acting Chief Environmental Public Health Officer with the Division of Environmental Health.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Mary Lou Scroggs, and I'm the Environmental Public Health Officer Administrator with the Division of Environmental Health overseeing the inspection and enforcement.
At this time, I want to thank all of the staff for being here this afternoon. And if I could have our Deputy Director Uggan please, given that this is not a very lengthy piece of proposal rules and regulations it is today, to please read through the proposed rules and words.
And before you begin, Deputy Director Terry, Deputy Director to Terry Uggan, I'll go ahead and put up the draft rules on the screen. Crystal, if you can just go ahead and give me screen sharing abilities.
Thank you. Ready? Chapter four, Public Health and Sanitation. Article 28, Governing and Enforcement of Public Health Guidances and Directives During the COVID-19 Public Health Emergency. Paragraph 428101. Purpose. The purpose of these rules and regulations is to protect, promote public health through the implementation of enforcement procedures for violations in guidances and directives issued by the Department of Public Health and Social Services during the COVID-19 Public Health Emergency declared by Governor Lourdes A. Leon Guerrero in Executive Order Number 202003 on March 13, 2020. These rules and regulations shall be liberal constructed by the Department of Public Health and Social Services and applied to ensure compliance with the Department of Public Health and Social Services guidances and directives. Paragraph 428102, Authority. Title 10 Guam Code Annotated, Chapter 19, Section 19802, authorizes the Department of Public Health and Social Services to promulgate and implement rules and regulations to implement and effectuate the provisions of chapter and to enforce the provisions of chapter through the imposition of fines and penalties, the issuance of orders of such other remedies as are provided by law. Paragraph 428103, Title. These rules and regulations shall be known as COVID-19 Public Health Enforcement Rules. Paragraph 428104, Definitions. Persons means any natural person. Business means a partnership, firm, association, corporation, or other legal entity. COVID-19 means the virus caused by SARS-CoV-2 infection. Guidance and Directive means the official documents issued by the Department of Public Health and Social Services as the public health authority providing orders or guidances for the mitigation, containment, and prevention of the spread of COVID-19 in Guam. Facility means any public or private premises. EPHSS or Public Health Authority means the Guam Department of Public Health and Social Services. Public Safety Authority means the Guam Police Department. Paragraph 428105, Authority to issue the enforced guidance and directives to prevent transmission of COVID-19. During a state of public health emergency, DPHSS shall use every available means to prevent the transmission of COVID-19 and to ensure that all cases of COVID-19 are subject to proper control and treatment, including entry into the inspection of public and private premises for the purpose of ensuring compliance with DPHSS guidances and directives. Paragraph 428106, Penalties, Fines for violations of DPHSS guidances and directives. A. It shall be unlawful for any person or business to violate or fail to obey any guidance or directive issued by DPHSS with respect to COVID-19 Public Health Emergency declared by Executive Order Number 202003. Any person who violates or fails to obey guidance or directives issued by Public Health Authority with respect to COVID-19 Public Health Emergency declared in Executive Order Number 202003 or any extension thereof shall be punishable as follows. One, for the first offense, such person shall be guilty of violation punishable by a fine not to exceed $100. Two, for the second offense, such person shall be guilty of a violation punishable by a fine not to exceed $250. Three, for the third offense and each additional violation thereafter, such person shall be guilty of a misdemeanor punishable by imprisonment not to exceed one year or a fine not to exceed $1,000. C. Any businesses that violates or fails to obey any guidance or directives issued by Public Health Authority with respect to COVID-19 Public Health Emergency declared in Executive Order 202003 or any extension thereof shall be punishable as follows. One, for the purpose of offense, such businesses shall be guilty of a violation punishable by a fine not to exceed $1,000. Two, for the second offense, such businesses shall be guilty of a violation punishable by a fine not to exceed $2,500. Three, for the third offense and each additional violation thereafter, such businesses shall be guilty of a misdemeanor punishable by a fine not to exceed $10,000. Fines collected shall be deposited into an account for the use of DPHSS. Paragraphs 428108, Assistance for Public Health Safety Authority. During a state of public health emergency, DPHSS may request assistance in enforcing guidance and directives issued pursuant in Title 10 Guam Code Annotated, Chapter 19, from the Guam Police Department. Paragraph 428109, Severability. Any person or application of any provision of these rules and regulations are held invalid. Such invalidity shall not affect the provisions or applications of these rules and regulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Director Terry Uggan, and apologies for the screen share mishap there. So I think the director is coming back to his, okay, there he is.
Janelle, if I may, before we get our first speaker, the intent of this afternoon's public comment, one of the things we wanted to do was provide two-hour opportunity. We did have a technical difficulty about 2021 minutes, so we are going to extend the public hearing comment period for about 2021 minutes. And just to make it official, we started at 2:21 and will close the public hearing for comments today at 4:21 PM. Thank you very much. Thanks, Janelle.
You're welcome, sir. So I would just like to, just a few housekeeping rules before we begin with the public comment period. I know that we had initially mentioned in our public notice that we, there is a limitation of 100 participants, and that's because of the limitations placed on the Zoom account. We clearly don't have 100 people in the Zoom room right now. We would like to just ask those who will be making their testimony or providing their testimony today, in order to give everybody a chance to speak, if we could limit ourselves to about five minutes per speaker, just so that we can allow everybody to provide testimony. Also, I'd like to let everybody know that we do have an email address so that those who are unable to provide a comment today or testimony today, they can send a written testimony to the email address that we have set up, and that email address is publichealth@dphss.gwam.gov. We have sent that out to the media and to the public as well, and we will continue, we'll post that on our website and our social media pages. So if you're unable to, for whatever reason, if we're out of time today, if you're not able to submit or give public comment today, you can submit your written testimony to that email address, or we're also taking note of who's in the Zoom room today. We will put your name down, and you can also submit testimony or provide oral testimony at our next public hearing, which is on Wednesday from 2:00 to 4:00 PM, November 4th. So again, I'd just like to ask if everybody can just limit their, their oral testimony to about five minutes, just so that everybody has a chance to provide testimony today. So I'll go ahead, sorry, go ahead, Director, if you have a.
You know, before we start, we also want to take a moment to recognize members of the Guam Legislature.
Oh, yes.
For public comment this afternoon, Senator Peto Terlai, Senator Will Castro, Senator Teletitigui, Senator Therese Terlai, who is also our chairperson for the Committee on Health, is with us this afternoon. I'm going to go to the next screen just so I don't miss anyone. I believe that's who we have. So thank you all for joining us this afternoon. Thank you so much, Janelle.
Thank you, Director. So, oh, and one other thing as well, I'd also like to ask if everybody just keep their microphones and regulate it, if you can keep it on mute while others are speaking, so as not to interrupt their testimony. So I will go ahead and begin call upon Mr. Dominic Hernandez, if you can go ahead and provide your public comment. Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you, and I want to go ahead and thank Public Health, this is time for having this hearing, and allow me to speak about the fines and other issues that are going on with the public hearing. I just want to say first that with the fines, my issue with that mainly is because of the fact that we do currently have 37,000 people who are unemployed, and many businesses who are shutting down. While I agree that, you know, people should follow the rules, they should follow the regulations. At the same note, finding them, I believe, is only going to make things more difficult rather than easier, especially when it comes to their finances, and many people are already struggling. With the POO alone, we make about $12,000, or sorry, $1,200 per month. Even at $100 or $250 for one or two violations, that's a huge chunk out of their pocket, just to be able to try to afford it if they were to violate it. Again, I do agree in the fact that we should follow regulations, but as far as the fines, that's my only issue on it, is just due to mainly our economic issue going on with many who are unemployed. With the fines and regulations as well, I believe it should go through legislation, and legislation should be the one to ultimately decide if this is something we should or shouldn't do. That way, we have a better process as far as with our, through our government, allowing legislation the chance to hear it, present their cases, debate upon it, and then vote on it on whether we should or should not pass these regulations. And if it comes out that they pass it, that would be good because other states as well have been doing similar ways, like the state of Alaska, they went through their state legislation to decide if they should impose any fines, and went from there and took it from there. So I think Guam should follow suit and follow example of other states that have done this, as far as finding people for violating any executive orders, just allow the legislation a chance to debate upon it and make a decision based on that. Those are the only two comments I mainly wanted to make today about the issue, and I hope we can all come to a, some kind of consensus on this and go from there. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hernandez, for your comments. Next, I have Senator Teletitigui. If you would like to go ahead and make your comments, the floor is yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Janelle. Well, I didn't plan on testifying here today. I will probably on the second day. I'm here to listen to what the public has to say at this time, but thank you so much for the opportunity.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome, Senator. All right. Next, we have, oh, and one more thing I'd like to also ask is for those who are making comments, if you can just state your name for the record. Thank you. Next is Mr. Jaren Uggan. I'm not sure if he's still in the Zoom room. Let me just see if I had him down, but I'm not sure. He might have left the Zoom room. Okay, I don't see him in the Zoom room. He might have left. Okay, we'll go ahead and call on Kim Anderson. Hi, Ms. Kim Anderson, if you're still in the, I see you in the Zoom room, but if you'd like to make a comment, you can go ahead and just unmute and turn on your video camera.
I am here just to listen, but thank you very much.
Okay, all right. Thank you. We have a Cherry. Let me just see if the Cherry, Cherry, there, I don't see a last name for Cherry, but if you're, if you'd like to make a public comment, you can go ahead and do so.
No comment for me.
Okay, thank you very much. I see an individual who, the title or their name is Galaxy A71. That's the only name that is provided. I don't, I don't see another name. If you're, if you'd like to make a comment, you can, oh, okay, I see you. Oh, okay, I don't, do you have a microphone where you're? If you're using your cellphone, we can't, unfortunately, we can't hear you right now. Okay, I'm sorry, ma'am. We're unable to hear you. Are you able to turn on the mic on your, on your cellphone? Okay, um, I apologize. I weren't able to hear you. I can, you know, there's a chat box. Let me see. There is a chat box if you want to put your, your name down in the chat box, or maybe your comment in the chat box in the Zoom. But also, if you want to provide written testimony, you can do so in our, through our email address, publichealth@dphss.gwam.gov. Thank you. I apologize about that. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to, I see a name here, Jen, and there's no last name, but I also see that there's no microphone on this particular cellphone. Ms. Jen, are you, would you like to make a public comment? If you want to turn on your video? Okay, we can come back to you, or if you want to make a comment in the chat box so that we can, you can notate your intention. Okay, next is Senator Peto Terlai.
Thank you very much. First off, I just want to listen to the public comments, but I, I have several concerns on the bill itself, because it didn't mention, that bill itself didn't mention who's going to be doing the enforcement. Is it public health, or are we going to get the assistance of the police department or law enforcement? And the other issue that I'm concerned about is if a business is caught in violation on that one particular evening, are we going to close that business right down on that, you know, that spot on that same moment that they, they are caught violating the, you know, the rules? Those are the things that I wanted, and, you know, we'll be, we'll be talking with the rest of the senators, but first off, I, we would like to, to get some of the insights of our community first, before we just pursue a bill for something like this. And those are the two concerns that I'm, I'm kind of, I'm raising right now is, you know, the enforcement, who's going to do it? Is it public health, assisted by the Guam Police Department, or is, if the business is caught right on the spot that evening, or who's going to close it? Is public health authorized to just close that business or take away the license or whatever? So those are the things that we need to impart on the bill if necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Terlai, Peto Terlai. Okay, and next we'll call upon our Chairwoman on Health, Senator Therese Terlai.
I'm just listening. Thank you. I posted that in the chat. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you, Senator. Okay, next we have Mr. Tom Jones.
Good afternoon. I didn't make any prepared statements. This is the first time I've attended something like this, so I'm a little bit nervous, but I just wanted to, a little background on me, I don't own a business or anything like that. I'm just an ordinary citizen for the most part, student UOG, retired military. So I'm mostly speaking from the perspective of just a person who would fall under the citizen sections of the rules. A couple of things that I saw that I wanted to bring up just for people, I don't think people have answers today, but food for thought as this is sorted through, is that the bill itself or the proposal mentions private premises. And so in, on the extreme end, since that's fairly, fairly broad, it gives, makes it sound like it could be possible that you could have a warrantless inspection of your home for, to see if there are violations of these regulations that DPH puts out. The other concern I have is that with many rules and regulations, just using traffic and driving as an example, they're fairly standard, people know them, they're, they're, they learn them through to licensing and stuff like that, but the response to the pandemic, sometimes week to week or month to month, has various things that come out that adjust. And so it'd be, I can foresee that there's a distinct possibility that somebody could be in violation of a DPH directive that they weren't aware of. And so there's a little bit of concern on my end for that. And then in a broader sense, and I appreciate all the hard work that, this is a thankless job to have to try to manage this thing, and I do appreciate all the work that everybody at DPH and our government is doing, because it's not, you guys didn't cause the problem, you're just the person in the chair when it happens, and that's just not fun, and I understand that. I think that one of the things to look at is, maybe look at this in terms of if this were, say, TB or some other type of infectious disease that, that we've dealt with throughout our lifetimes, make a comparison to that and see if you think that the, the things you're proposing are reasonable in comparison to all of the other types of illnesses and diseases that, that we as humans have dealt with over time. And I think that, like I said, I wouldn't want to be you, being the one to have to figure this out. But again, I do appreciate the time you guys have given me to make my comments and concerns today, and I look forward to hearing what the rest of the community has to say as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jones. And I know I called upon a Cherry earlier, but then we also have a Cherry Mindiola in the Zoom room, and I don't know if that's the same person, but I'd like to give an opportunity for Cherry Mindiola, if that's a different person, to speak, if they're still in a Zoom room. Okay, I think the Cherry Mindiola may have left already, so I'll go ahead and move on. Is there a Ramalisa Oriando still in the Zoom room? Okay, she might have left as well. I don't see her. Okay, we'll move on to the next person, Mary Ann Ostero.
Oh, I'm just here to listen. I'm just listening. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you very much, Ms. Ostero. I see an individual with the initials JG earlier, but I think that person might have left the Zoom room already. So we'll move on. There is, okay, there was a person who had an iPhone with a phone number attached, but I, I don't see that person in the Zoom room anymore. Is there an FI Cruz still in the Zoom room? Okay, I think that person also might have left. Is there a TS? I just see the initials TS. If you'd like to make a public comment. Okay, we can come back to you. TS, I only see the initials TS. I don't see a name, so we can come back to you. Is Herman Addo still in the Zoom room? If you are. If you are, okay, I see Herman Addo, you can go ahead and make a public comment if you'd like to.
I didn't initially plan to comment, I was just here to observe, but I just, since I'm on, wanted to point out that, you know, we're in unprecedented times with an unprecedented virus or pandemic that we're facing. So a lot of the conventional things that we're trying to do, or think about, or use to combat this pandemic and try and get ourselves back to normal, don't fit the mode. So we need to start thinking outside the box. So a lot of the things that we think or know may work, or things that we're used to doing haven't been working. We are at high infection rates, things aren't getting much better. So we got to think outside the box, are fines and penalties outside the box, maybe, maybe not. Are they the best thing for us? Maybe, maybe not, but we got to start doing some things, because what we're doing right now hasn't been working, or hasn't been working as well as we would like it to work. So before we start throwing and casting stones at individuals that are trying to come up with solutions, if fines and penalties aren't solutions, then we need to add to the conversation and come up with solutions as well to help the community get out of the predicament we're in right now. That's all from me, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Addo. Next is Ms. Eileen Goffigan. If you're still in the Zoom room, yes, okay. Ms. Eileen Goffigan, if you still would like to make a public comment, you may do so. There is a person by the name of Jay in the Zoom room. If you would like to make a comment, you may do so. If you can just please state your name for the record. Okay, I'm going to go back to JG, or I'm sorry, TS, if you would like to make a comment. Okay, and then there is, okay, thank you. I see TS said no comment. And then iPhone 4889354. If you would like to make a comment, you may do so. If you can just please state your name for the record.
No comment at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. And then we also have members of the media in the Zoom room, I'm not sure if you're just here to, in your official capacity as journalists, or if you would like to make a comment, but you may also participate and make comments if you would like to do so. I see Jerry Partito, I see Oya Jasmine. Okay, they're just here as reporters, okay, noted, thank you. I don't know if I'm missing anybody else. I'm looking at the Zoom room, I think I called on everybody. If there's anybody else that I might have missed that I didn't call upon, please let me know. You can also put comments in the chat box. I know Crystal is the host, is there anybody else, maybe in the waiting room?
There is nobody else in the waiting room.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I just want to make sure there's nobody else that I might have missed that would like to make any comments. Okay. Director Sinagastin, did you want to add any other remarks? Director Sinagastin, would you like to add any more remarks or comments?
Sorry about that, yeah, I have my mute on, sorry, thanks Gina. Actually, no further comments, just want to thank everyone for expressing some of your thoughts and comments and coming in to listen this afternoon. Just as a reminder, we will stay on until 4:21. And so if you have other friends or family, or other people in the committee who would like to jump onto the Zoom call and provide comments, please, we welcome those comments and input this afternoon. So thank you very much so far, for those who are with us this afternoon, and to the members of the legislative body, thank you for joining us to listen. Of course, in actual, I really appreciate your comments as well, all those that have presented some comments in us, looking forward to how do we improve these rules and records. And to the question is, is this really the way of us thinking out of the box? Very good point, so thank you so far. We really appreciate your input at this time.
There is a question in the chat from an iPhone user. What are the steps next after the two public hearings are completed?
Let me. Thanks, Crystal, and thanks for that question. I'm going to try to get the director, I think he just stepped out for restroom break, I think we're all just trying to get a restroom break. We'll get back to you on that question in one moment, thank you. Okay, thank you all for waiting. We'll come back on. The director and deputy director again had to step away, they were called away to an emergency meeting. But we do have Ms. Rosanna Robago with the Division of Environmental Health, who will go ahead and facilitate the rest of the meeting. Thank you, Ms. Robago. So we'll go ahead and call on. I only see your name as Galaxy A71, so if you can go ahead. I'm sorry.
Belinda Snyder.
Okay, thank you. You can go ahead and state your public comment, thank you.
Okay. My name is Belinda Snyder. I'm here to give an oral testimony for the COVID-19 Public Health Enforcement, Public Health. Public Health Enforcement, Public Health, Public Hearing for October 31st, Saturday from 2:00 to 4:00 in consistence with the executive order 2020 TAC 38 to become law, to become law and to implement the rules. First of all, I'm only part of the that the information via pdn.com. And it's, it's, it's specified about the fines for public by private violations of $100 starting and then businesses violations to $10,000. My concern is, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Okay, my concern is how are they going to enforce it? Is there going to be a hotline number where people can call in if they see a violation? Because I don't think there's going to be enough police to go around to check or other people. So my concern is having a, these are just ideas, having a hotline, people can call in about the violation. Another thing is the vaccines, according to President Trump, will be, I guess, ready and available by the end of this year or the beginning of next year. So is, would that kill this bill? For example, if the vaccine is already implemented, is this still going to be law or is this going to be obsolete? Because that wasn't in, in the material that I received through PDN on my, on my phone. Another thing I'd like to mention is about educating the people more because some places where I've been, they're wearing their masks wrong. If they can have a poster board of a full-sized person at the stores or these different places, so they'll know how to wear their mask right. I know the governor is doing an excellent job trying her best and you all are doing an excellent job and the lieutenant governor trying your best to help the people and save, I guess, the lives of people on Guam. However, you have those that still don't want to follow the, you know, her executive order. I understand they will say, well, it's my freedom, it's my right, I don't need to do this, I don't need to do that. And that was maybe the whole purpose too for this, this, this to become law. But with that said, I think it's important that the people know how to wear their masks correctly. And I think as far as the borders coming in, you know, people coming in from the outer islands or from, I don't know, Korea or Japan or, because I know we, 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 we live for the tourism to come to, you know, people to come to Guam and whatnot. However, these people coming in, how are we going to know if they have COVID or not? There's no card saying that, okay, you were tested, you're negative. Even if they isolate for 14 days, it's not going to show sometimes the COVID. So I think they need to be tested when they come in, not just come on in, you know, Guam half a day, welcome to Guam type thing. I think it needs to be more stricter on also these people coming in from the other countries and also the federal government. I mean, they're ship docks at Naval Station. How are we gonna enforce this on Naval Station or all the other bases if this ship docks, nobody's down there checking everybody if they have COVID or putting everybody in confinement or whatever it may be to ensure that everybody is going to be fine. I mean, that if they're positive, it won't transmit to other people, you know, through through the, the air, right? That's how it transmits airborne. So my concern is those through, those three things, although COVID started, I believe in March 2020, everyone's aware of the pandemic and how it can take some lives and it's, it doesn't, doesn't discriminate. We all know that. I think we're all smart enough to understand that even a five-year-old. But you have some people that just don't want to follow the law or not follow the law, but understand the consequences. When you pass on this COVID to other people, lives are taken. And it's, and I'm glad actually this law is in, it's going to be enforced. I'm glad the governor put this out in an executive order and that's very important. So we also have to consider the small businesses, a lot of the businesses closed because of this, this pandemic. So how are we going to get these businesses up and running for the economy? You know what I mean? The economy, hello? Did you just go off? Oh, I'm sorry. Economy needs to go, needed to get back up and running. And in order to do so, the small businesses also have to follow this. But how are you going to track it to know who's violating it and who's not? I think there needs to be a hotline so someone can call in again. Okay, because we don't want people to file bankruptcy because they don't have people coming to their stores, they don't have people coming to their, the shopping center because COVID, COVID, it's like almost having like, how do you say it? Phobia or something. I mean, the mask is there to prevent you from catching it. That's the way, that's the purpose. Wash your hands, you know, little things. And I know it's been said constantly by the governor, by you all, you put out brochures, all kinds of things. And I think it's just one, one really being diligent to the point that, okay, I'm going to do this as is and follow the rules and the laws, you know. But I think it needs to be put forth. I don't know educate, but I don't know how much education can we do? I mean, it's on the media constantly. It's everywhere in the stores, there's signs, there's posters. So I think it's airborne. If you're going to catch it, I hate to say it, you're going to catch it. It's just like the flu, right? You can catch the flu by someone coughing. But, but I just, I don't know. This law is good. If it becomes law, it's good. But I find it too, it might hinder the businesses and other people because it's almost like paranoia now. People, their, their businesses, they're closed down. It's like a ghost town. And if people are going to start filing bankruptcy and whatnot, as far as the churches are concerned, I am a Catholic and I'm proud to be a Catholic. We do do our social distancing in church. My goodness, we're six feet apart even more. It's now to the point where we're, we have masks, but we're out in our cars receiving Holy Communion. But I don't think the governor, and I'm sorry to say this, but I'm going to say it. I don't think she has any rights to stop me from going to church. I believe in my faith. I believe in God and Mother Mary and all the holy angels and saints, but I don't think it's right to stop me from going to church. The churches have done everything possible, but again, some people catch it. I don't know what else to say. I don't know if it's their home environment or what they're doing. It's hard to, to, to try to stop somebody from catching it if they're not going to follow the guidelines, the public health guidelines on how to prevent catching it. But I think the most important part is everybody has to get tested, which you're doing a fine job at within the different villages. I'm, I'm close to my, my cellphone, so you can hear me. So that's another thing. Another thing we need to think about is schools. I know this is about fines and, and fines at private fines in the public fines, you know, with the businesses. We also have to look at the schools. The schools need to go up and running. We cannot have the kids out of schools and do it all virtue. I know DODA has their children in the schools. The, the students are getting tested. I don't know if they're getting tested every two weeks. I don't know how they're doing it, but I know their, their school's up and running and in the States as well, some schools are already up and running. Kids are going to school. There's social distancing and virtue learning for some. And if they get tested, the temperatures are checked. So and also I think once we get the vaccine, I don't know if this, this law is going to be obsolete. Like I said, another, in other words, no longer a law because the vaccine should be coming at the end of this year or the beginning of next year. So I believe, and I, well, my personal aspect to this too is people just have to wear their mask. You know, if you're close to someone, wear your mask. If you have to remind somebody, hey, six feet apart, get away, six feet. I had to do it several times and I'm not being rude. But if you're not wearing your mask, you're not protecting me. If I don't wear my mask, I'm not protecting you. So I think it, I think that's what needs to be in, you know, people just need to follow it, you know, wear your mask constantly. And that's about it for my, my testimony. Let me see if I have anything else I want to touch on. These are just ideas. Again, like I said, I just touch on bits and pieces, parts of the, the rules that was spent for this, for this to become law. I think the governor is doing a very good job. Like I said, and the lieutenant governor and all of you all are doing your best to keep everybody safe. But the bottom line comes down to, is the person going to change their behavior to keep themselves safe? And that consists of my testimony. Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much for your testimony. We appreciate it. And thank you for your patience as well.
Yes. Um, no question.
So our public hearing is really just to receive public comment on the draft rules. So thank you. We appreciate.
I don't have to submit a written, okay, do I have to submit a written? This is an oral. I'm okay with the oral.
Yes, yes. And we are taking notes of all of your comment. Yes, thank you.
Oh, God bless. Keep saying. And thank you so much. Bye.
Thank you. We appreciate that. I called upon this person earlier. I think they were not in the Zoom room at the time, but they came back. There's an FI Cruz. I, I don't recall if he mentioned that he wasn't going to provide any comment in the chat, but if you would like to give oral testimony, FI Cruz, you're welcome to do so at this time. Is there an FI Cruz? If you would like to provide oral testimony, you may do so. Okay. There's also a J in the Zoom room. It's the only initial I see or the only name I see. But if you would like to provide oral testimony, you may do so as well at this time. Okay, well, we're here till 4:21 because we did have a late start. So and I did call in everybody in the Zoom room, but for now, I think everybody that is here has provided the testimony if they wanted to submit testimony today. I'm just going to go ahead and open up the floor to anybody who would like to make a comment. And just as a reminder to everybody, we do have another public hearing scheduled and that's on Wednesday from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. It's also via Zoom. We did send out a public notice to the media and to the public with the new Zoom link for that virtual hearing for Wednesday, November 4th through 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. We are also going to be placing a public notice in both newspapers as well. And then we also did provide the draft rules and regulations to the media as well. And the email address again, if you would like to submit written testimony is publichealth@dphss@guam, I'm sorry, guam.gov. The last day to provide written testimony is November 4th at 4:00 p.m. So we are accepting written testimony until November 4th at 4:00 p.m. And again, that email address is publichealth@dphss.guam.gov. Yes, Senator Will Castro had a question. If we will have a copy of the preceding summary minutes or copies of testimony, we do plan on posting the minutes of today's public hearing and the testimonies as well will be posted on our website. And we can provide that to you as well, Senator.
Janella, could I just jump in here? Thank you. Well, since everyone had the opportunity to speak. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to have multiple hearings on this issue. Typically, what would happen in the legislative process is we would have a hearing, an ample opportunity for my colleagues and I to debate either in private or on the floor. I'm just a little concerned that we won't have another opportunity to come back, review the minutes, review the testimonies and maybe give some meaningful feedback based on all things that have been presented. So you mentioned we're going to have another round at this on Wednesday. And if I can encourage you, you know, please, I want to encourage administration to have a definition for stay at home. And I asked a very specific question relative to a shelter in place provision. If you would like to, actually, if I can just state it and not type it, please have a definition for shelter in place. My concern rests with another initiative that was brought up earlier in the year. And maybe I may have gone a bit extreme in using my son and I as an example from being prohibited from throwing the football next door, 150, nobody's even close to us within 50 to 100 feet. And so if it's ambiguous that you could drive by and find me and my son for, for exercising in the adjacent property or yard, you know, that would be problematic for me. I don't suspect that that would be the intent, but I certainly wouldn't, I wouldn't extend that benefit of the doubt to any government to be able to abuse that threshold, that power. So I, I, you know, I would like to ask you to please help me understand this and allay any concerns that I had expressed earlier when the same legislative body was attempting to do that. And I do thank you for giving us an opportunity to weigh in. If there's another chance, I missed yesterday's briefing. Perhaps, Janella, there's another chance I can get my legislative chair and then the director or whoever it is, forgive me, I was tied up yesterday in other obligations. But, but there are some serious concerns that I have with this. I want to support it. I believe that the need to enforce these provisions with a fine, I do believe there needs to be some teeth. But there's also got to be some rhyme and rhythm to this in terms of, you know, under what conditions, when and where, you know, this, this, this concept of stay at home, if you're doing Uh, you know, this, this, this concept of stay at home, if you're doing one of these three things and then you're gonna, find me based on that explicit example, it, it just doesn't cut it for me. So I think we need to give a lot more thought. I do appreciate you, uh, and your leadership team for taking the initiative to do something. But if I could just say we can exercise a little bit of caution, uh, in moving forward. And then I'm going to get with the legislative chair and my speaker and my minority leader to talk about how it is we can assert ourselves a lot more fully into this process. I just find it very, 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 very weird, for the lack of a better term, that we're not integrally tied into this, this decision-making process. Um, I'll reserve the rest of my comment until Wednesday so I can see the feedback that we get and I can, I can make a meaningful contribution going forward.
Thank you very much, Senator, for your comments and we will, uh, take note of that and, um, put it in for the record as well. Appreciate it.
If I, Janella, if I should ask another question since it's, uh, it's really quiet here.
Of course.
Do you have any intentions? Uh, let's just have a conversation here. Do you have any intentions of uh, qualifying the application of these fees like cordoning office section, for example? Uh, if the virus is being proliferated in some parts of the island more so than the others, uh, would there be a qualified application of certain rules and procedures, like if, if it's in a hotspot, like, I don't know, let's say Deadado is an example. If Deadado has been identified that within a three and a half mile radius, that there's a proliferation of the virus among certain households, uh, is there an intent to, to isolate that and apply stricter measures there as opposed to Yemattic where there probably isn't a single household with the same type of infection rate or an infection to begin with? So how, how do you foresee this? Or do you anticipate, uh, the, the director, deputy director can answer, anybody can answer for your team. Or do you anticipate an island-wide blanket lockdown as an example? I've heard, uh, in discussions, I've been in a discussion with folks uh, who were talking about the possibility of a 40, and I don't want to alarm anybody, but a 48-hour, uh, shelter-in-place provision, uh, island-wide, I found that to be unreasonable. While I can support the fees, I find it unreasonable that we would even think about locking down the entire island uh, with a curfew and a stay in your home provision, uh, without consideration to how big your home may be or the property around your home. That's just ridiculous in my mind. But is, are, are there any thoughts? Can you contribute to that discussion to help, help me understand this a little better?
Um, so, um, I, I would probably defer to, um, either our deputy director or Ms., uh, Rabago to respond to that. But I, I would just like to, with all due respect, Senator, so our, our public hearing today is really just to receive public comment. But also for decisions like that or discussions like that, I think that's more on a level that would probably be had with the governor's office. Um, because those are, you know, heavy decisions that would probably be made at, at that type of level and, and not just a, a decision that would be made just alone with public health. So I, I, I'd just like to point that out. And I don't know if, um, Deputy Director Duñez or Ms. Rabago would like to chime in on that.
I can appreciate that. And please, I look forward to the invitation to have that discussion before these rules are, uh, defined and promulgated. Uh, I was anticipating that the intent would have been defined at, at this level, which is the first level of, of generation, right? So I, I, I respect that. Thank you. And I look forward to having that conversation with the governor's office after the election. Thank you.
Sure, sure.
Right. So Senate, let me see. Senator Castro, thank you for, um, thank you for that question. Um, I represent the Division of Environmental Health. Um, I know some of your questions are about anticipating, um, a lockdown based on probably a given area on the island that may be deemed a hotspot for COVID. Um, that is probably something beyond the scope of our Division of Environmental Health. I'm not just going to speak for our division. This is probably something that they would have to defer and consult with the Division of Public Health, who is not represented here uh, at this public, uh, hearing. So they would be the ones to certainly drive the, any, um, Epi, uh, decisions with respect to the spread of COVID. Our role with Environmental Health is strictly, um, the environmental operations with respect to enforcement of the COVID, uh, guidelines and the executive order. I don't know if that helps address some of your, uh, concerns.
Absolutely, it does. And I appreciate that. I appreciate that you have multiple people from your department there and I look forward to multiple stakeholders at the table. I'm accustomed to hearing from the state surgeon cell and I can appreciate your subject matter expertise, but this issue, uh, in my humble opinion, is way beyond just the virus and the pandemic. There are implications that can affect the mental health of this community, implications, uh, that are financial in nature, but affect every part of our lives. And so I don't want to use this as an opportunity to state my objection to one or more things. More than I do want to ask questions since I was assured by the, by Janella that there'll be other opportunities to express my concerns and contribute, contribute in a positive way to other solutions. Uh, because I think, I think, you know, there should be triggers along the way, right? If we had the Bureau of Statistics and Plans, I know people that can give input that if this happens, that we, we press this trigger and we can apply certain parts of, of, of this plan, if you want to call it that, to certain areas where, where it's appropriate. Uh, my concern as a, as a, as a member of a third and equal branch of government is that we don't empower any one branch with too much authority without the ability to really back in, uh, before it's too late. And so right now, right now, I'm, I'm exercising my soul. My sole authority is one member of this body to allow you to go forward without trying to call my speaker or call an emergency session to stop you in your tracks. Uh, because I believe that the intent is good, but I'm not hearing a very clear intent uh, beyond just wanting to contain, to contain the pandemic. Everybody wants to contain the pandemic. But how you do it is probably where we're going to differ along the way. But Rosanna, appreciate everything your, your team is doing and, and the Department of Public Health. I don't expect you or anybody there to have all the answers, but that's why we speak up at these hearings so that people can go back and find out. Do you intend to, to implement a shelter in place? I mean, a, a shelter, a, a lock, uh, a lockdown at your home, right? A shelter in place? Because if you do, then I, the deal's off. Um, if you're gonna intend to apply that with this rulemaking authority, I would be the first to rally among my team and say, this is ridiculous, because I will go outside and play football with my son if I don't pose a public threat. And I hope you can understand.
Yes, we can. Thank you. And then thank you very much, Senator Castro, and we will definitely take note of your, uh, concerns and your comments for the record. Thank you.
Um, maybe I could just throw another question out there since it's awkward sitting here and everyone just typing away. Uh, I understand perhaps that we can call it in if there's a violation. You guys will be patrolling the villages. I can see that happening. That's fine. Is there a Surohanu hotline, if you will, so that if we see Gov Guam officials who are violating uh, these procedures and rules and regulations that we set for ourselves, that we can call so, uh, without fear of retaliation? So I remember there was a time, I don't know if you recall in the 80s and 90s, this Surohanu hotline, I think that's the term. Late, uh, Lieutenant Governor Eddie Rages was once in charge of that and that, that, that office was charged with uh, receiving complaints against the government, right? And then he would be given the, uh, protection of anonymity, I guess, if you can say that. So is there, is there gonna be a hotline that we can call if we see, uh, as an example, I, I don't mean any ill to anybody, but a bunch of Gov Guam people down there at a complex, four or five people, uh, I don't know, putting together packets for some odd reason. And, and, um, there's five or six and they're clearly in violation of, of the rule without masks, et cetera. Is there a Surohanu hotline so we can keep ourselves as government officials in check? And if not, maybe we can, we can propose one.
So, um, once again, I, I, I just wanted to make it clear that the, the forum for today is a, uh, the public hearing is to receive public comment. But I do want to point out that we do have the 311 hotline. Um, and I believe there is an extension there for people to be able to, uh, report any types of violations. Um, and, uh, I have had people contact me in the past asking, uh, where they can report violations or potential violations. And in some instances, um, they've actually just contacted the precincts directly. Um, if they're unable to get through to 311 for whatever reason. Um, so there is that option. The 311 is an option for them to contact.
Right. And, and I'd just like to add, Senator, that's a great question. You can also call the Division of Environmental Health. You can contact the Division of Environmental Health. You can call us at 300-9579. You could also email us, um, complaints and I will put it on the chat so everybody can see it.
That's great. And I'm, I'm only smiling and jest because the 311, I was thinking is the Pua, the Pua phone number, right? But I guess if there's the opportunity to report abuse, I'll take that. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Uh, there is a, Jared, again, I, I think I called on you earlier and I think you might have mentioned that you were here to just observe, but I just want to make sure. I'm not sure if you wanted to um, offer some oral testimony. Uh, but I just want to make sure that I don't pass you off. If you would like to make a comment, you're welcome to do so. Okay, no comment. Thank you, Jared. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you. And again, if there's anybody else here that would like to, uh, provide their comment or make some remarks, even if they're short, you're welcome to do so.
Excuse me, Janella?
Hi, yes, editor.
Hi, Ken Leon Guero has been trying to get on, sorry, let me, let me tell you. Yes, Ken Leon Guero has been trying to get on, and he can't seem to get on the link that you sent us. It says November 4th, but that's the same link he uses, correct?
Oh, no, he might get, he might have the, so I sent out a notice for the November 4th as well, so he probably has the wrong link. I can--
Can you send that? Yeah, yeah, he's standing by and wants to get on. So is there any way you can email that to him? Do you have his email address? Or you can email it to me, and I'll be happy to forward it to him.
I believe I have his email address. Let me send it now, Senator.
Okay, I'll let him, I'll let him know, and he'll be standing by trying to get on. And I believe it's been, the public hearing's been extended a little bit according to the directive because we started late. Okay.
Yes.
I'll let him, thank you, Janella. Okay, thank you.
Okay, one moment. Thank you.
Mr. Leon Guero is in the Zoom room now.
Hi, Hafada. Good afternoon, Mr. Leon Guero.
He might be muted still.
Okay. Hi, if you're, if you're there, if you can just unmute yourself, and if you would like to turn on your camera as well, you may do so. Oh, there you are.
Sorry about that.
Okay, you have the floor if you would like to make your oral testimony, if you can just state your name for the record.
My name is Ken Leon Guero. I'm a community advocate, have been for the past 12 years, and I'm also a candidate for the 36 Guam Legislature. But more important than that, I'm a citizen of Guam, and I'm very concerned about the ramifications of this latest executive order. I'm concerned about the bypassing of the administrative adjudication process. I'm concerned about the bypassing the open government laws. And this administration has not covered itself in a lot of glory when it comes to how it has been handling this pandemic. And I would have thought that at a time like this, the government would have wanted to do everything to restore trust and competence in the government so that the people would be more willing to follow the guidance of the government. This executive order and proclamations do the exact opposite. I am hearing from so many people who feel that this is overreach on the part of the administration. And while I have every confidence and heart, I watched him operate for years, I'm not comfortable with the fact that all public input is discretionary. I mean, for example, this meeting right here, the way it was announced, it was Public Health has decided that we would hold this hearing. It wasn't the fact that it was a mandatory part of the governing process. There's a little phrase that everybody seems to be overlooking. It's called consent of the governed. Government derives its power, authority, and ability to operate at the consent of the governed. And when you cut the governed out of that consent process, you introduce fear, anxiety, doubt, suspicion, and you create the very conditions that you're trying to avoid. You want compliance with the, you want the people to comply with the orders? The people have been complying with the orders. All we have to do is look at our mortality rate. Our mortality rate is tracking the same this year in a pandemic as we did in 2018 and 2019. The number one cause of death right now is underlying conditions aggravated by COVID. And if you look at the number one cause of death in 18 and 19, it was all the different comorbidities, cardiac disease, diabetes, high blood pressure, cancer. So the reason why there's a big difference between infection rate, death rate, and positive tests. And this administration, by cutting the people out of the process, leads us to assume the worst. And when we look at what we're building on, we're building on a series of dubious financial transactions involving millions of dollars of money that were supposedly put here to take care of the people. And when those things happen, they happened without public oversight. So to continue down that road is going to create more suspicion about the actions of the government. I mean, I'm now hearing people saying, and I'm one of them actually, that believes that we're maintaining this level of lockdown purely for the federal funding, purely for the justification of expensing the federal funding on payrolls and equipment to support the lockdowns. I'm a little upset that we're talking about taking the leftover CARES Act money and using it to buy everybody lunch at a restaurant that they will have to eat in the parking lot. This is money that should be used to improve public health, strengthen public health, because we've been battling this chronic disease longer than we've been battling the pandemic, and we were losing the battle against chronic diseases. This pandemic just only, you know, stepped on the accelerator. And so when I hear that we are focusing more on locking down, we're actually aggravating the very conditions that cause spread. We're taking generations of people, and we're locking them in their homes. We're limiting their ability to go outside and exercise, get, and get healthier. We're limiting contact with people. We have a large population that has chronic diseases, and we're locking them in houses together with multiple generations. That's not conducive to a healthy situation. And when you consider that the largest spread is government in Guam. I mean, we've had a number of instances at churches and at stores and restaurants and stuff, but we have had nowhere near the positive detection rate in those non-government events that we are seeing in government operation events. So I think that for this operation to move forward and be credible with the public, it needs to be open and transparent. Instead of having secret meetings where with no notes taken, all the meetings between the Physicians Advisory Group and administration officials should be documented, should be videotaped, just like this meeting is right now, just like public hearings at the legislature, session at the legislature, board meetings at all the different autonomous agencies. That way, the people of Guam can have insight into what the decision makers are thinking and how those thoughts are going to impact our quality of life. Right now, by meeting behind closed doors and secret rooms, not disclosing any information, the anxiety factor is going to shoot up, the fear factor is going to shoot up, the suspicion factors are going to shoot up through the roof, the government is going to lose credibility, and you're going to start running into resistance against the most basic requests, which the people of Guam have complied with so far. So my recommendation would be to, if they, we're going to maintain this executive order, this, on the emergency shutdown, such as it is, we need to do it in an open and transparent manner. We need to have more public meetings streamed, not less. We need to take public input into the processes regarding the decision making and the expenditures. I still can't believe the taxpayers of Guam just spent a million dollars of care money on a hospital that we could have gotten free from joint region. So that is what causes the suspicion to drive. This is very similar in the eyes of the people to that $5 million payment to the Pacific Star with no contract, no quotes, no bidding. This is another one. How many more things like this are going to happen with the remaining CARES Act money? Because at the end of this year, contrary to what administration officials are saying and the legislature is saying, there's no guarantee that we're getting more money from the federal government. Even, even in Washington, they're not guaranteeing that there's going to be more money. They're talking about it, but you know, they've been talking about the green energy initiative for how long? So what we need to do is be realistic in how government, our government governs. We need to be respectful. The government derives its power from the consent of the governed and include the governed in the decision making process. That concludes my testimony.
Thank you very much, Mr. Leon Guero. And again, I'd like to open the floor to anybody else who would like to submit any oral testimony. I've called upon everybody in the Zoom room, but if there's anybody else that would like to give oral testimony at this time, you're welcome to do so. We have about 15 minutes left in the public hearing, so again, if you would like to make any oral last minute statements, you're welcome to do so. Just want to remind, I'm sorry.
Is this going to be posted online so that those of us who missed the beginning of it can go back and watch it and, you know, share it with other people who weren't able to attend?
Yes, that's correct. We intended to stream this live on our Facebook page, on the Public Health Facebook page. Unfortunately, we encountered some technical difficulties. We were trying to post it first on our Public Health Facebook page, and then we tried to do it on the governor's Facebook page live. For whatever reason, it just wasn't working out. But we are recording it, and then we'll post it on the Public Health Facebook page so that others who weren't able to watch it or join the Zoom public hearing will be able to watch it from the beginning all the way to the end.
Are you going to have it on like YouTube as well for those people who aren't on Facebook? Because I know a lot of people, hard to believe, but there are a lot of people that still aren't on Facebook.
Yes, we will post it on our YouTube account as well.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Okay, so we're less than 10 minutes away from concluding today's public hearing. Just a few reminders. We do have an email address for those who are unable to submit oral testimony or provide oral testimony at today's public hearing. So if you'd like to submit written testimony, you may do so via email at publichealth@dphss.guam.gov. We are taking minutes of today's public hearing and we will be posting that. Thank you, Vivian, for providing that email address in the chat box. So that email address is in our chat box. We will be posting the minutes as well as the draft, the Public Health Draft Enforcement Rules on our website. And again, our next public hearing is on Wednesday, November 4th from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. We did issue a public notice via email to our media partners and to other organizations as well as to the legislature. So the web link or the Zoom link is provided. But we will also be placing a public notice in both newspapers as well for the, with the Zoom link. So again, that's on Wednesday, November 4th from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. It's a virtual public hearing, similar to what we just did today. And once again, that email address for submitting written testimony is publichealth@dphss.guam.gov. Just a few more minutes left. I, I'm not sure if Deputy Director Lori Duñez is still on the Zoom call. I don't know if you want to give some closing remarks or Ms. Robago would like to give some closing remarks. But before we do that, I just want to, once again, just if there's anybody else that wants to provide oral testimony, just calling on one last time, you may do so before, we just have maybe five minutes left before we conclude today's public hearing. And if, if nobody else wants to take this one last opportunity, I just want to go ahead and thank everybody for all of their comments and testimony and remarks today. And also for those who stuck around for the entire two hours. I really appreciate your patience, especially in the beginning when we had all those technical difficulties and waiting when we had the late start to today's public hearing. So I'd like to turn over the floor to Ms. Rosanna Robago. Thank you.
Thank you, Janella. On behalf of the Director, Arthur San Agustin, Deputy Directors Terry Uggan and Laura Duñez, we would like to thank you for your time and patience at our public hearing. We realize that, you know, it, it takes a lot for, for you to take time out of your weekend, especially a special holiday weekend, which is Halloween. So happy Halloween, everybody. And thank you for taking the time to sit through with us and present your testimonies. It means your, your comments, your testimony means a lot to us. That's why we want to have this public hearing, not just today, but also on Wednesday. We want to hear from you. We want these regulations to work for the community. And maybe we can't please every person, but, but there needs to be a means to the end. We need to make sure that we can, can have the, the property to enforce these COVID provisions because people are getting sick, people are dying. And we need to find a means to deter those individuals or businesses who may not be compliant. So thank you again for all your time, your testimony, your comments. And we will, we will hear from you soon and we will definitely take your comments into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rosanna. Before I turn over the floor to Ms. Lori Duñez, I also wanted to thank Ms. Crystal Paco San Agustin from the Governor's Office for also offering her assistance and her support, especially trying to work with us to stream this event on the Facebook page and hosting, co-hosting this with us as well. So thank you, Crystal. And now I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Lori Duñez for her remarks as well.
Thank you very much, Janella. I wish to thank everybody who joined us today and especially the Guam Legislature for, you know, coming to, to listen to all of the comments that were made. And I wish to thank everyone who did take a lot of their time to join us. And we look forward to any other comments that come in on Wednesday. And so the, the good thing about this is that everybody who wasn't able to join us, you will be able to have access to both the minutes. And also you can go and actually view the the, the video, the recording on our website. So thank you. And if you still want to submit any comments, you were given the website, I mean, the email address that you can send it to and we look forward to it. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, Deputy Director. And, and again, thank you to everybody who, who participated in today's public hearing. Thank you to our media partners as well for being here. We have just a few more minutes left, about three more minutes. Want to just remind everybody to have a safe Halloween. It is Halloween today and I know that the weather cleared up. So we have environmental health here with us today and we did put out draft, or we did put our guidance, our guidance for Halloween. So just want to remind everybody to be safe during this Halloween day. And again, thank you to everybody for their their yes, make sure you wear your mask for Halloween. Thank you, Mr. Jones, for that reminder. As much as possible, please stay home. But if you, if you did go out, make sure you wear your mask, social distance. Stay in your car if you're going to go through any of those drive-through events. Okay, well, that, I think we're just a couple more minutes. I think we're safe to say that we can conclude our public hearing. I just want to thank everybody once again for their participation, for all their comments and remarks. We are taking it into consideration. We will be posting today's public hearing on our Facebook page and our YouTube page and as well as our draft Public Health Enforcement Rules and the minutes on our website. So once again, thank you, everybody, for your participation and sticking around with us today. We really appreciate your time and your patience. This concludes our public hearing. Have a safe day, everybody, and happy Halloween.
Happy Halloween, everyone. Bye.
Take care.
Happy Halloween.